For coming, I'd like to call the Eureka City Council to order. Can we please get a roll call? Please get a roll call.
Yes, or Mayor Seaman is absent tonight. Mayor Protem Bergel.
Here.
Councilmember Castellano.
Here.
Councilmember Mester.
Here.
Councilmember Arroyo.
Here.
Councilmember Allison.
Here.
And we'll. Can we please rise and do the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under.
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, do we have a recorded closed session, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor Protem, no actions were taken in closed session.
Thank you. Mayor's announcements, we have a proclamation for Humboldt Lemonade Day, and we have people here to accept that. That will be mailed to you, hi Taffy. So Councilmember Allison, would you please read that proclamation?
Yeah, let's do it. So this proclamation is in recognition of Humboldt Lemonade Day, which is August 29, 2020. Whereas Lemonade Day is a free, community-wide educational event that helps empower today's youth to become tomorrow's entrepreneurs. And whereas, in the time of COVID-19, Lemonade Day is more than just a day. It is a celebration of resiliency in the face of adversity, showing the true spirit of Humboldt County's young entrepreneurs. And whereas, Lemonade Day has provided the online game Lemonopolis during the pandemic to infuse today's youth with the basic business and entrepreneurial skills needed to become successful, contributing members of their community. And whereas, youth are being offered an opportunity to learn financial literacy while addressing the national change shortage in Humboldt County during Changing Lemonade Day, a Change Drive campaign from August 29th to September 4th, 2020. And whereas, young people who develop entrepreneur, I can't say that word, skills are also developing life skills that give them a strong sense of control in their lives. That say, I have influence over my own life, and I can affect the person I become. And whereas, the lessons instilled through Lemonade Day curriculum, such as budgeting, time and money, food, health and safety, and being a supportive community member are crucial in uncertain times like today. Now therefore, I, Austin Allison, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim that the City Council of Eureka hereby recognizes a virtual version of Humboldt Lemonade Day on August 29, 2020, and encourage residents of Humboldt County to explore Lemonopolis with a kid in their life and to support the Changing Lemonade Day in 2020 Change Drive, happening August 31st to September 4th, 2020. And I just have a question, could you, could someone explain what Lemonopolis is?
Thank you, Austin.
Happy to.
I would be happy to, thank you so much. Thank you all so much for your support of Lemonade Day, not only this year, but for the last 10 years. This is actually our 10th anniversary. And while this is not the 10th anniversary we thought we would be having, we're very excited about the program that we do have for kids. So Lemonopolis is an online interactive business curriculum, basically. Through a game, it teaches kids all about running their own business, how to budget, how to do a business plan, how to save, how to project expenses. So it's a full-spectrum curriculum for kids ages 6 to 12. I did it with my nine-year-old, he thought it was amazing. So I highly recommend doing it with a child in your life if you have the chance. And then the other piece, we're really excited about this here is, one of the spirits of Lemonade Day is having kids give back to the community and help the community. And one of the things we were really excited that we could start addressing this year is encouraging kids to do a change drive to bring some change back in local banks. So as you guys see, we will be doing a change drive. There will be more information about that coming up on our Facebook page and our website as soon as we have all the details in place. But please do keep an eye out for that and encourage all the children in your life to participate. Does anyone else have any other questions about Lemonopolis, Lemonade Day, the Change Drive?
I have a question. Will there still be, will there still be as many lemonade stands? I guess I missed that part.
There won't be any boost.
There won't be any.
Based on public health recommendations, we couldn't encourage kids to serve lemonade this year. So this is, this is our pivot this year.
Okay, will you be sharing any good lemonade recipes for us to make at home?
We have shared a couple on our Facebook page, but yes, I can share some more before we finish off our cycle. The one we shared actually had redwood leaves in it, redwood.
Wow, that's really exciting.
Yeah, it was, it's a very fun recipe, so.
Okay, I look forward to trying it.
Susan says it's her absolute favorite.
Thanks for all you do, I appreciate it. My daughter did it several years ago, and it was just such a great experience for her. And she done it to Betty Chin. And then we've gone out and tasted every year. It's just been a wonderful experience, so thanks for keeping it going.
Yeah, we're really looking forward to having the boost back up and running next year. But we're really excited that we had an opportunity to continue engaging kids and really celebrating our youth entrepreneurs this year.
Well, thank you for all you do. Okay, so Councilmember Arroyo, you have our proclamation for Women's Equity Day, Equality Day?
I sure do.
At that too.
All right. This is an exciting one. This is in recognition of Women's Equality Day, August 26, 2020. Whereas, on August 26, 1920, the 19th Amendment to the U.S. Constitution gave American women the right to vote. And whereas, on this 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment, we celebrate the progress that has been made toward guaranteeing the right to participate in our democracy regardless of gender. And whereas, the women of the United States have designated August 26 the anniversary date of the certification of the 19th Amendment as a symbol of the continued fight for equal rights. And whereas, women, especially female identifying people of color, continue to face inequalities across the country and remain steadfast in the ongoing fight to ensure legal and institutional rights for people of all genders, races, ages, abilities and backgrounds. And whereas, in pursuit of equal rights for women, the city of Eureka must strive to set an example, ensuring that all women are able to live full and healthy lives, celebrate countless pioneering women and their victories, and we continue our work to build a society where our daughters have the same possibilities as our sons. And whereas, Women's Equality Day presents the opportunity to reflect on the legacy of American suffragists, to recognize the progress we have made and that which we have yet to achieve, to embody our progressive traditions and to unite in the fight for the equality and liberation of all people. Now, I therefore, Natalie Arroyo, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim August 26 as Women's Equality Day in the city of Eureka and a call for observance by all of our citizens. This, the quietest clapping. And do we have someone here to speak about it?
Yes, Julie, Kelly is here to receive that for you, Councilmember Arroyo.
Thank you, Natalie. Celebrating the passage of the 19th Amendment that allowed many women the right to vote. Though there were many that continued to be denied the vote, but did generate the paradigm shift to recognize each and every citizen has the right to vote. The League of Women Voters was established to support the right to vote and also the responsibility to vote informed. The League of Women Voters has also celebrated its 100-year anniversary supporting voters, providing nonpartisan information to voters that is the foundation of our democracy. The League has had hoped to celebrate the 100th anniversary of the 19th Amendment and the League, but the pandemic has forced us to postpone until next year. The celebration has been postponed until next year, August 14, 2021, still marking the milestone of the women's right to vote. The right to vote continues to be a crucial, continues to be crucial to our democracy and should not be taken for granted. We thank the city of Eureka for taking this opportunity to recognize the importance of the milestone and encouraging residents of the city to take advantage of their right. We also thank you for thinking of the League and recognizing the impact of providing the right to vote to women 100 years ago and women's continuing participation in the political arena. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that will be mailed to you, Julie. So now we're moving on to public comment. This is the time for matters of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Pursuant to City Council Resolution Number 2011-22, City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Do you have some public comment?
Yes, Mayor, I'll go ahead and call on everyone, and then I'll be setting the three-minute timer here in the council chambers. So we have Judy, would you like to be our first speaker?
Good evening. To Chief Steve Watson, Captain Brian Stevens and Sergeant Greg Hill, thank you for your painstaking attention to detail, diligence and work in taking on the grinding task of bringing the chaos that is Hatcher operation to life. This afternoon, Hatcher issued a press release saying, "Staff and board members are in the process of assessing our policies and procedures, evaluating staffing options to increase safety, strengthen community ties and be the best neighbor we can be." These are hollow words and empty rhetoric, and this is regurgitated garbage. And every one of you on the council sitting there now who believes it is a problem. The ABCs of how to destroy a city are simple. Allison, Arroyo, Bergel, Castellano and Sparks. It does not fall unnoticed that until Dean Lauder was the city manager, Hatcher was sacrosanct. The residents of that neighborhood pleaded for relief, and the arrogance of the ABCs in denying it was palpable. You deemed their stories exaggerated, asked a better question, deflected to something else, read an essay or scolded people in the audience for language used. And all the while, Hatcher lied and got away with it, and they still do, as we do nothing to rein them in. Perhaps it is time for remedy for those who have so patiently waited for you to acknowledge the problems you have caused by allowing Hatcher to continue unfettered. People should not have to endure what you have created. It is time for the council to make rules to protect the neighbors and the non-addicted. Rules like all entities exchanging within the city of Eureka boundaries are required to exchange on a one-for-one basis. It's done by count or by weight. Secondary, tertiary and supplying cases is prohibited. A separate, independent person who is not Hatcher-affiliated does syringe exchange. Hatcher must look beyond the service to their clientele and observe the effect they are having on their immediate neighbors. Hatcher property must be gated and fenced. The gate must be closed and the property vacant when Hatcher is not actively open and staffed to serve its clientele. Issues brought to the attention of Hatcher personnel must be dealt with promptly, not addressed with a posted sign that tells clientele this bullshit has been going on for weeks. Hatcher needs to be required to obtain a business license and insurance and go through environmental impact review. These steps are specific to residents, to the neighborhood, and to lessen the blight your actions have brought on. And you need to fix it before Eureka citizens follow the path of Orange County and to Debut County in abolishing their exchanges. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Our next speaker is Erin.
Yeah, thanks for letting me speak. I don't disagree with all the points from the last speaker, and I appreciate the Eureka Police Department's responsiveness to neighborhood concerns. And I know that this is a really difficult subject, and I think my views are going to be unpopular, but I still support Hatcher. And so I'll start with a couple flaws, I think. We're in the letter from the city and the police report. In the letter, there are two primary claims for ending authorization of Hatcher. And the first is that they're distributing methamphetamine pipes. The second is that Hatcher is a safe haven for drug use and dealing. So for the first point, Hatcher is distributing methamphetamine pipes. It seems pretty clear. But, you know, I looked up the code that Hatcher linked to, and indeed, you know, in that code, it says that staff and volunteers, they can distribute needles or syringes or any materials deemed by a local or state health department to be necessary to prevent the spread of communicable diseases. And I looked up some recent academic articles, and it looks like distributing methamphetamine pipes fits into that. So I don't know if the health department has deemed that, but it's not outside sort of best practice. The second point is that Hatcher is a safe haven. And I, I think actually that the police report contradicts this claim repeatedly. I think that there's a lot of, well, there are a lot of examples within the police report of the undercover officer and his contact having to move away from the line of sight of staff or away from the building in order to, you know, deal drugs. So I, I don't think, I don't doubt that it's a burden for people in the neighborhood to have a program like Hatcher. I, I ride my bike by that neighborhood all the time, and I, I see what goes on, I know. But if Hatcher closes, what are we doing for drug users? Number one, Hatcher is a place that does offer face-to-face accountability and food and counseling, and people are not going to stop using drugs because Hatcher closes down. And the people who are most desperate and who have the fewest resources are the ones who are going to suffer. So I've seen discussion online that some people are okay with that happening, that somehow the diseases and the harm that is done to those people will stay in the community, and I, I just don't think that that's true. Hatcher, to my knowledge, has never claimed that they're going to solve the drug crisis in our community that exists and that will continue to exist. I think Hatcher has a really narrow focus, and that's reducing the risk of disease among these human beings. So I guess in closing, I hope that the city has a solid plan for risk reduction and needle exchange if Hatcher closes. And I just don't think that closing Hatcher is going to solve the problems of needle litter. Or drug use.
Mayor and Council, our next speaker is Gary Lewis.
Good evening, my name is Gary Lewis. In the wake of Captain Stevens' report on Hatcher, I'm sure that many of you have struggled with one basic question. Can I continue to support the principles of harm reduction in Eureka? The answer should be simple, yes. So why even ask the question? Because the report makes one thing perfectly clear. Hatcher, despite its name, does not provide harm reduction to its clients or to the community. Instead, it provides a safe area for drug dealers, selling to a captive audience of addicts who don't stand a chance of ever getting off drugs. All the needles and meth pipes you want, instructions for how to get the best high, a stop at the bathroom, some food and clean clothes, a quick purchase from the dealer waiting in the parking lot, and you're all set for another couple days of sleeping on the library steps until Hatcher opens again. I see the same addicts walking the street year after year, and they look more sickly every time I see them. One of the older addicts struck me as a gentleman on a walking tour when I met him a couple years ago. I recently saw him slumped on a neighbor's lawn with his hands red and swollen. I don't think he'll last much longer. Can any of you call this harm reduction? Eureka's opposition to state renewal of Hatcher's license is a big step forward, but in all likelihood, the state will renew the license anyway. Is the council truly ready to make the problem, take the problem seriously? Just a couple months ago, the councilwoman in charge of Hatcher's board told us that the library neighborhood was a great place for children to attend the new head start school. Brandy Wilson and Jessica Smith had many of you convinced that Hatcher could not be replaced and should not be regulated. Perhaps Les Arifirefox will be equally effective in persuading you with her neurolinguistic programming skills. I hope not. Just today, Hatcher put out a statement offering the same remedies we have heard for two years. Nothing has changed. How can we get a needle exchange program that offers true harm reduction? Simple, with independent oversight, designed by this council in collaboration with the residents. We know what harm reduction looks like. Waterfront Recovery, the Sea Set Team, the Aegis Clinic, Betty Chin. The residents of the library neighborhood are ready to work with this council to solve the problem. Are you ready? Are you just going to tell us that it's a great place for kids again? Remember, Fortuna doesn't have this problem because they rejected Hatcher from the outset, but Eureka has lost that option. Regulation is the only choice left. Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Cody Johns.
I'm sorry, am I able to speak? I, you can hear me, okay. I tried to turn on my camera too, I don't know if you can see that. So my name is Cody Johns, I'm a Ward 3 resident, and I am also wishing to speak on the subject of Hatcher. I was very frustrated by the report that came out because of, for one, a lack of transparency. Obviously, there's a lot of, you know, unanswered questions about what exactly happened with Dean Lauder's very short tenure here. But the city council has been, you know, active on this subject for years. There was a citizens, the syringe advisory council on this subject. And, you know, I hope to meet with you, you know, individually to get more information, but from what it appears, just, you know, from the outside, as, you know, what shows up in the news, it appears that the council wasn't actually involved in this process at all. It looks like this is just kind of a plot hatched by the city manager with the chief of police. I read the report, I watched the video. What I saw was the staff at Hatcher sending people away, you know, requesting that they don't, you know, pushing people to not engage in drug dealing on the premises. So as the previous speaker had mentioned, it, it, the report actually contradicted what the, the report was, what the letter actually said, in that they were not encouraging or permitting that drug use, or sorry, or drug selling on the premises. But, you know, more importantly, to me, it's just a matter of resources allocation too. I, it's really hard to fathom that when we're in such a budget crunch that the police department, I don't understand the justification for spending seven months on this secret investigation to, to find out what, like, we don't already know. We don't, we already know that there's drug use and that there's drug dealing in the city. And yeah, it happens near the, near that area. It was happening in that area before Hatcher existed also. So the other issue with having, you know, using the police in that way that I think is problematic is that it's not as if any of this went to trial. It's not as if anybody was able to answer to these accusations. It's a disproportionate use of power for police to be able to issue a lot of findings and reports and accusations with no opportunity for anyone to contest those allegations, no need to present any actual evidence. The evidence that they did present in the form of a video actually contradicted. I don't know what more they want the staff to do. They said, I don't know what you're doing here, but, you know, don't do it here. This is not the place for that. And the dealer and the police officer moved to another location. So in my view, that looked like they were actually acting very responsibly in that situation. I don't know what the police would prefer them to do. I suppose potentially call the police on them, which, under the circumstances, would be fairly ridiculous considering that the whole function of Hatcher, or at least one of their mini, mini services provided to the city, is to distribute materials that are used for. So this, you already understands that those. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Okay, and Mayor, our final speaker is Bonnie. Please go ahead.
Yeah, hi, can you guys see me or whatever? I'm having a hard time signing in.
I can hear you.
You can hear me, excellent. Anyway, I'm going to just reiterate some of the points that I made this morning at the Board of Supervisors meeting as far as directing the public health officer to oppose the recertification of Hatcher. It is sad that the state would, despite the undercover work, still think that this is a good idea for such a small entity. Eureka already has two other needle exchanges. I don't see a reason why a third is needed and definitely why a third is needed in a residential neighborhood down the street from a children's library and down the street from a head start with three to five-year-olds and why it's needed at all when we have one-to-one exchanges already in the city. I, I mean, I'm frustrated. They, the housing prices around here, nobody can move a house, or if you do decide to sell, you're going to, you're going to lose money. And I, my biggest problem with Hatcher is that they have been exempt from everything that we have been subjected to for these last five or six months with COVID. They are not told to socially distance. They are allowed to hang out in clumps on the library steps to their leisure, and the cops are very shy about coming around here. I mean, they only come when I call, it's not like they, they, you know, they just patrol. But I just have one question for you guys in light of all the protests and everything that have been going on in this country and how the police have been mobilized for those things, and these are protests for good things. I am wondering, had, had the Hatcher clientele been made up of a different demographic, if it would then be deemed a problem in Eureka? But the fact that they aren't, it seems like it's okay. And that is my problem with it. There is no way that a minority demographic would be allowed to sit on public property that is notably with signs all over, closed to the public, leaving biological waste, medical waste, things that are designed that are supposed to go to Hatcher. But let me tell you, once you've shot up heroin, the last thing you're thinking of is where to properly dispose of the needle. So therefore, the library directors and the workers that come in before they even sit down at their desk, they have got to clean that up. Now have that, if that demographic was different, would we still be tolerating that mess? Okay? And it is harming Eureka. I would hate to have us hit bottom before somebody gets two nickels together in their mental brain to figure out that this is a bad idea. I would like Eureka not to reach that. We have many examples around. The needle exchange is failing. The people that like it are the people that don't live here. If I lived in Fortuna and drove by on my bike, or I lived down in Cotten and rode by, you know, on my bike and said, oh yeah, it's a wonderful idea, I think I would have a different idea. But if you pull.
So if you want to just wrap it up, your three minutes are up.
Oh, well, I think I got my point across. I hate Hatcher.
Thanks for being here, Bonnie, we appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, that is all of the callers who have contacted me today.
Did you have anybody on the phone?
No.
Go. So we're going to move on then to the public hearing. We're going to.
I think I would have a different idea, but if it's.
Hey Bonnie, can you mute? There you go. So we're going to go to the public hearing, Community Development Block Rat Response Round 1. Can everybody see the PowerPoint presentation on your screen?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members and City Staff. Tonight I bring to you, tonight I bring before you the public hearing for the State Community Development Block Rat CB1, the 2020 CBG public hearing. What is CBG CB? Community Development Block Rat Coronavirus Response Round 1, Funding Available Pursuant to the Coronavirus Aid, Relief and Economic Security, the CARES Act, which was signed into law on March 27, 2020. Under the CBG NOPA, the city of Eureka is allocated approximately $157,000 for eligible activities. What are those eligible activities? Under community development, we have public service to respond to COVID-19 impacts, public facility improvements to increase capacity for healthcare facilities, public facility acquisition, and acquisition or improvements of housing facilities for persons experiencing homelessness. Under economic development, we have business assistance and microenterprises. As expected, once this NOPA was released, city staff received a few proposals from a couple of local organizations who are interested in collaborating with the city. Those proposals received. We received three from Community, Redwood Community Action Agency, one from Humboldt Senior Resource Center, and the city of Eureka had two backup projects.
Kristen, I'm sorry, and.
Kristen, I'm sorry, and Madam Mayor, I need to, I forgot to recuse myself at the beginning of this item, but I'll go ahead and do it now. This pertains to my employer, Redwood Community Action Agency. So even though I would not be involved in any of the projects listed, it is my employer. So I'm going to recuse myself and step out.
Thank you, Councilmember Arroyo. Carry on. City staff worked hand-in-hand with the state Housing and Community Development, HCB, discussing qualified program activities under the CARES Act to ensure city submits a good application. After many conversations, we came up with the following. Please note that all agencies were invited to at least one call of the state to ensure they understood the qualification breakdown during this process. So under the project, the projects that Redwood Community Action Agency proposed, we had to strike the bike kitchen out. The state suggested that it be better submitted during a regular round of CDP funding cycle. And then the safe routes to school, and then the two, RCA decided to weigh on both of the safe route. Are both the activities due to the current requirements surrounding COVID-19? City of Eureka's project, Parklet, the city of Eureka found alternate funding opportunities to continue with this project. So what are the eligible project proposals? The first one we have is Humboldt Senior Resource Center. I would like to welcome Rachel and Barbara, who will be doing a program overview.
All right. Hi, everyone. This is Rachel Sovereign. I'm the Director of Operations with the Senior Resource Center. And I wanted to talk a little bit about our project proposal that we had. I did move to another room so you won't hear my chickens during this presentation. So I'll, a little bit quieter in here. And so with the Humboldt Senior Resource Center, we have several different programs that we offer. And one of those is Redwood Coast Pace, which is an all-inclusive health plan for eligible adults who wish to remain living in their home. And it includes services such as adult day healthcare, primary medical care, medical specialty services, PTOT, speech therapy, social work, transportation, home care and meals. And so when we were faced with the COVID-19 pandemic, it really drastically changed the way that we provide services to the elderly population that we serve. The biggest change that we noticed is that with the social or physical distancing requirements that we have now, we need to, a new way to reach those participants to really make sure that they were receiving the care that they needed. So with the help of US Cellular and some community partners, we were able to purchase 210 tablets and are now distributing those tablets to participants in our Redwood Coast Pace program. And these tablets are actually being used for telehealth, PTOT meetings and therapies, so they can participate in the comfort of their own home and really maintain their strength while staying at home. And we have other opportunities for them with activities. We're doing bingo, lots of fun things to kind of keep their mind agile during this time and allow them to communicate with their families and do some social interaction as well, being that they're really stuck in their house and not having that interaction with other participants or the outside world. So that's kind of just a quick breakdown of what we're doing. We're really looking for the funds to help sustain that program as we don't know how long COVID is going to last with these precautions. And, you know, it, it is something that I think even once this pandemic is over, that has a place in our day-to-day lives to continue to just really have that communication with our elderly population in their homes. Barbara, did you have anything to add?
Rachel, I think you did a wonderful job. But I think this was a really critical move on our part. We're responsible for their care and wellbeing 24 hours, seven days a week. And without able to see them or bring them in together, it was a huge challenge for us. And having the tablets where the physicians, the nurse practitioners and nurses can communicate them in real life and be able to speak their health has been, it's incredible. And to be able to watch their therapy sessions via Zoom has just been very special to me to see the energy that's happening, even though we're not able to be together. So we are really thankful for the opportunity to be able to be in front of you and. So thank you so much for considering our application.
Do we have any questions for Rachel and Barbara? Does council have any questions? Thank you both, Rachel and Barbara. Thank you. Sorry, okay, there we go. So we don't have any questions for them. The second project is the City of Eureka's Utility Assistance Program. Over you by me. The grant overview is, we would like to assist individuals in households at or below 80% area, median income with utility assistance. The grant maximum amount is to be determined, but we would like to assist for no more than two months. Here is the income limits for 2020. They will have to live, rent our own in the city of Eureka city limits. Households must provide evidence of reduction in income late to COVID-19. In verification or zero income form will need to be completed. We will also request the same at least three months and copies of the utility bills. So we're planning on doing a second part to our rental assistance program. We'll be around very similar. We still are working out some of the small details, but we would like to give that around. Does anyone have any questions for Kristen? Saying that, we'll turn it back to you, Kristen.
Screen share.
Yeah, sorry.
Just click on that slide.
I tried that earlier. I didn't click to comment. I gave you back there.
Hit the stop sharing. It's the right, the red button. Again, and share. See how that, the questions.
It's still thinking. Sorry. I took a second earlier to record it. Sorry, guys.
I'll ask a quick question, if I may. And these two programs are not competing with each other. The, the CDPG grant would fund both programs simultaneously?
Correct.
Great.
It's okay too. So we're just working on our technical issues. It'll be just a moment. Oh yeah. So I request that city council make a recommendation that recommends council approve both these two projects. Share this evening and adopt a resolution with city council approving an application funding in an amount up to $107,000 to $290,000 for the CDPG CB application. Okay, before we open the public hearing, are there any questions from council? I can't see you guys. There we go. No questions at this time? Okay. So now we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. Do we have anybody here that, from the public that would like to comment on this item?
Mayor, no one has contacted me to speak on this item.
Thank you. So seeing that, we will turn it back to the councilmember Messner for comments or emotion.
Yeah, I think this is really exciting to be able to determine these different, really important needs in our community. I really appreciate the Senior Resource Center and all the things that they have done, as well as the city in regard to the work that they've been doing with community members and, and just how we can come alongside community members who are struggling during this time. And so I would love to make the motion to, well, we already held a public hearing that adopted a resolution of the city council, the city of Eureka approving an application for funding from the State Community Development program in the amount of $157,290.
Thank you.
And I want to say that, I mean, thank you to staff for putting this together and really thinking about a wide variety of needs in our community and for the, the people who are, I believe Rachel and Barbara, who are on the call, that I love pace. So thank you for all of your work to keep our seniors healthy and engaged in community.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Can I vote please?
Councilmember Costellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo is absent. Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Bergel?
Aye.
Four yes votes. Councilmember Arroyo absent. Motion carries.
So we will, thank you, Kristen. So we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council. It will be an active motion pursuant to city council resolution 2011-22. If a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request should be made to a councilmember for action meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a councilmember, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. I didn't get any notification of anything being pulled. Did anybody have anything?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Costellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Sorry, whoops, aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bergel?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Okay, we are now going to move into ordinances and resolutions. We're going to look at C1, June 2020 zoning code update.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
So the June 2020 zoning code update is before you this evening for adoption. And at your last council meeting, you introduced the update and included two recommendations made by the planning commission. Those recommendations were to continue to round down for parking calculations and to remove the proposed tree removal section for further evaluation. The proposed ordinance before you tonight has been updated accordingly. Staff is recommending that you waive reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 983CS to approve the June 2020 zoning code update. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Are there any questions for council? No questions? Okay. So we will open it up for public. Did you have a question, Austin? We'll open it up for a public comment. Does anybody from the public would like to speak on this item?
I have not had a request from the public to speak on this item.
So will you return it to council for a motion or comment? And/or councilmember Messner?
I'm excited about moving forward with this. I'll go ahead and make the motion to waive reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 983-CS to approve the June 2020 zoning code update.
I'll second.
Any other comments? Councilmember Arroyo?
I'd just like to apologize to staff for my confusion around the item that I request. Oh, my dogs are barking. Okay, around the item that I requested to have additional conversation about, while I concur that it is a little more substantive than the, than just a cleanup. And so it's nice for people to be able to weigh in on it. I do support the changes recommended. So I was a little bit confused when I was reading the, the new zoning code. So thank you for your patience around that. And I hope that we'll see that come back before us quickly. I don't have any concerns about it. So just wanted to show that.
So we have a motion in a second. Any further comments? So can we have a vote?
Councilmember Costellano?
Aye.
Councilmember Messner?
Aye.
Councilmember Arroyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Allison?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Bergel?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to reports and action items. We're going to move into D1, City Fueling Facility, and that is Director Gerben.
Good evening, Madam Mayor Pro Tem and Member of the City Council. As you may recall, in February, when staff presented this year's capital improvement program, one of the projects that we highlighted during the presentation was a city fueling facility on the High Tank property at Wood and L Streets. And that really came to the forefront in staff's conversations after the PSPS events last October, when we found that the fuel supply for city vehicles and even more so for city generators, the 35 generators that power critical facilities like water, wastewater, police, fire, things like that, that fuel supply wasn't as secure as we thought it was. So since the February CIP meeting, staff led by the city engineer and a lot of this effort has really been with the deputy city engineer, David Case, have been working on developing the fueling facility, the plans and specifications. And we've got those plans pretty far along at this point, ready to finalize the design and put it out to bid. But in the interest of additional public outreach, we wanted to come back to council and get authorization to move forward with it. Last week, as I mentioned in an email to the council, we sent out postcards to 168 neighbors, both the residents and the property owners of 168 properties around the, or sorry, 168 parties total for properties around the High Tank. And staff has received one inquiry based on those postcards. They were provided the same YouTube link that council was, and it's the same presentation that David is going to play for you this evening. So David's going to perhaps cover a little bit more, but press play on that video. It's about 15 minutes long. And then after that, you'll have an opportunity to ask questions and both David and I are available for those. All right. Thank you, Brian. So I'm going to jump right into the presentation. And as Brian said, I'll leave.
And as Brian said, I'll leave some time afterwards to answer any questions. All right. Can everyone see the YouTube video?
Looks good.
Okay. So, there is, I'm not sure how it's going to play. I'm looking for a button Brian was telling me about that would play the audio directly through yours rather than through my microphone. But I'm going to hit play and, and we'll just go from there. I don't see that, that button, sorry. Oh, Brian's coming. Here we go. Oh. It's sorry. I had to exit the share screen. All right, there we go. Sorry for the delay. So this, this will sound a lot better. And I'm the deputy city engineer for the city of Eureka. I'll be giving a brief presentation regarding the proposed fueling station for use by the city. This fueling station will be for official city use only. No one from the public will be allowed to use it or even enter the site. Some of the things I'll be discussing are purpose, why are we doing this? As well as location, aesthetics, traffic, and safety. Starting with purpose, why does the city need their own fueling station? The primary reason that the city needs our own fuel station is to have a reserve fuel supply for emergency operations. Under certain circumstances, the city needs to maintain community services such as law enforcement, fire, emergency medical services, water distribution, wastewater collection, and so on. Examples of various emergency operation conditions include PG&E's public safety power shut-off with PSPS events, natural disasters such as severe storms, earthquakes, and so on, acts of terror, and other times of need. In situations where the power's out and/or fuel is limited, the city needs fuel to run generators and power vehicles. Currently, the city has almost no fuel reserves except for a few small tanks for Humboldt Bay Fire. During the last PSPS events, local gas stations were on a first-come, first-served basis and had no real guarantee that we could get fuel. Fortunately, we were able to get help from Mercer Frasier and were able to maintain essential community services. In addition to the fuel needed for the police, fire, and other emergency vehicles, the city uses thirty-five generators which keep the city functioning as needed. These generators require refueling on a daily basis and sometimes more. Although we were able to rely on Mercer Frasier for the last two PSPS events, doing so is not sustainable depending on availability of supplies and/or need, which is why we need to be self-reliant. We track fuel use during the PSPS events and use that information as well as other data to estimate the fuel needs during an emergency. We estimate that the city will need approximately two hundred and fifty gallons per day of gasoline and twenty-one hundred gallons per day of diesel. In order to determine the total volume of needed, we needed to first consider the type of event and also the duration of time we expect that it will occur. Since every situation is different, the city established two different levels of priority needs. The first is short-term or initial response. In this situation, we want to be able to maintain essential community services for one week, which includes law enforcement, fire, emergency medical services, water distribution, wastewater collection, and so on. The second is long-term or extended response. In this situation, we want to be able to maintain critical services only for up to one month, which is law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services. The assumption is that in a lesser situation such as a PSPS event or localized emergency, that fuel and/or supplies will be available within a week's time. In a larger situation such as a catastrophic natural disaster that affects the entire state or multiple states, it may not be realistic to continue maintaining essential community services, in which case, however, we feel that critical services would still be necessary. In order to meet the short-term and long-term priority needs, we estimated that we would need ten thousand gallons of gasoline and fifteen thousand gallons of diesel. Rather than go with two tanks, we chose a single twenty-five thousand gallon tank with dual compartments. The size of the tank needed to hold this volume is ten feet in diameter and forty-three feet long. This is a photo of a similar tank before it was backfilled and covered up. In addition to having a reserve fuel supply, it makes sense to use the station to fuel the city's fleet vehicles and equipment primarily for two reasons. The first, because stagnant unused fuel will go bad. You can't just purchase it and use it on the rare occasion. The second is cost savings as compared to paying retail. Some of the city's fleet include vehicles from the Eureka Police Department, Humboldt Bay Fire, Public Works, Recreation, Utility Operations, and all other city-owned vehicles and equipment. We looked at the fuel records and retail prices paid for the fuel as compared to the wholesale price. And assuming that fuel use and cost differential remains about the same, the city could expect to see a cost savings of over forty thousand dollars per year. The second topic is location. Where is this going to be? The site will be located at the southwest corner of the L Street and Wood Street intersection. This block is entirely owned by the city and currently houses the fire department's community education and public safety classroom, as well as two of the city's water tanks and support infrastructure. Why did the city choose this location? We chose this location because it's centrally located, it's out of the tsunami zone, it's owned appropriately with similar infrastructure on the block, and because it has a vacant level corner lot with good access to both streets. Next is aesthetics. How is this going to affect the look of the neighborhood? This photo shows a conventional-looking gas station which is brightly colored and very well illuminated. This is not how we want the new fuel facility to look. Like the red flower in this photo, the look of most conventional gas stations would stand out in a residential neighborhood such as this. With that in mind, we chose a mixed-use planning approach. Using this approach, we considered ways to incorporate a look that blends residential, commercial, and municipal uses into a single space. In doing so, we looked at architecture. We wanted something that was complementary in appearance to the adjacent architecture, but not so much that it distracts from it. Colors. We wanted to mimic the surrounding infrastructure and other homes in the neighborhood. Positioning. We placed the structure in a functional response to the existing open and green space, which means we moved the structure back towards some of the other infrastructures. So the existing green space that's there remains open, kind of as it is now. And last, lighting. We wanted lighting to be minimal and downturned. With that said, this is a rendering of what the fuel station will look like. These particular images do not include any trees or landscaping, but rather show how the structure itself might appear as compared to the backdrop. In addition to architecture, we considered landscaping. These are some photos of the landscaping plan. Although we do not have any three-dimensional renderings of what the plantings will look like and the image is difficult to see, the landscaping plan is based on the same or similar plants that are located in and around the site. We chose species that are evergreen and flowering to provide vegetation and color year-round. They are also drought tolerant in order to minimize watering and maintenance. And lastly, the plantings were positioned in order to provide a screen against the structure once they mature and develop. This slide shows an image of the overall site plan. In this drawing, north is facing upward. At the top of the screen is Wood Street, and at the bottom would be Harris. To the right is L Street, and to the left, this large circular structure is the high water tank. Near the center of the screen is the fuel island or fuel dispenser, right here. And near that is the structure which houses all the fuel equipment and electrical equipment, as well as a restroom facility. Down here to the south, to the lower part of the screen, is the buried tank. So that is going to be fully underground and covered in concrete. Trucks and equipment can drive directly over top of it. So if someone were to be coming in off of L Street, they could turn into the site, drive through here, stop, fuel at the island, and then continue on out onto Wood Street. And then similar, if they were coming in off of Wood Street, they can pull in this direction, stop, fill up at the island, and head on out to L Street. Next, I'll be discussing traffic. How much more traffic will this bring to the neighborhood? We looked at the actual numbers of fueling stops from our city fleet vehicles from time periods as far back as August 2019. Based on that, we determined that during an average weekday, that you can expect to see around forty-six trips and around twenty-two on a weekend. But keep in mind that a fuel stop actually consists of two trips. So one trip in and one trip out. We did a comparison of the pre-COVID-19 trips as compared to the post-COVID-19 trips and found the overall number to be similar. The only difference was that the weekday trips were a little lower and the weekend trips were a little higher. In order to give a more realistic breakdown of trips, we chose the pre-COVID-19 values with the expectation that use will revert back to previous conditions at some point. In order to give you a comparison to something that might be a little more familiar, we looked at the trips generated by a single-family residence. According to the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Handbook, a single-family detached housing unit equates to around ten trips per day. The new fuel station roughly equates to the traffic you might expect from about four new homes or two on the weekends. And of those trips, many will go unnoticed as thirty-eight percent occurred in the later evening and early morning hours, while most would be asleep. Another good way to compare the additional traffic to something a little more tangible is to compare it to some of the adjacent roadways. Harris Street, for example, gets almost fifteen thousand trips per day. So this equates to a point-three percent increase. L Street and Wood Street are local streets, although we don't have traffic counts for them, they probably get around four hundred trips per day, which is a little under six percent of an increase. So with that said, access is intended to be from either Wood Street or L Street. So the additional trips on either street is roughly half of the total expected trips. The last topic of the presentation is safety. How will this affect the safety of the neighborhood? Common concerns with underground storage tanks are soil or groundwater contamination and the potential for fire or explosion. While the potential for those still exists, they are far less likely to happen nowadays. Many of the stories you've heard are probably associated with tanks that were installed many years ago. Since then, there have been significant changes in the way things are done as compared to how they were back then. One of the biggest changes are the regulatory requirements. In nineteen eighty-eight, new regulations required leak detection, prevention, and corrective action for all underground storage tanks containing regulated substances. In 2015, revisions strengthened those regulations by increasing an emphasis on operation and maintenance. In addition, regulations added secondary containment, operator training, periodic operation and maintenance requirements, and reporting. Many of the older underground storage tanks were single-walled steel tanks that deteriorated over time. Many of them leaked and went unnoticed or were just abandoned altogether. In addition to the regulatory requirements, significant advances in technology have given us the ability to track and monitor the systems. Some of those improvements include tank monitoring and release or leak detection equipment. Sensors are located throughout the entire system which monitor fluid and vapors. It's a little difficult to see in the photo, but all tanks, sumps, and lines are required to be double-walled and have sensors that check the voids for leaks. The sensors are wired directly to a centralized computer which continually monitors them and sets off an alarm if any leaks occur. And any leaks that would be occurring would be a result of a failure of the primary containment structure, but still not have escaped into the ground because of the secondary containment layer. These photos are some examples of what some of the sensors and equipment might look like. On the last slide, I spoke a little about how the system works as a whole. This slide shows a few of the different leak detection methods. For example, tank gauging, intercity monitoring, which is the void between the dual wall of the tanks and sumps, statistical inventory, vapor and groundwater monitoring, as well as tank tightness tests and line leak detectors. As I mentioned during some of the regulatory requirement changes, operation and maintenance is a big component and various inspections and reporting by a certified individual are required on a daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, and annual basis. While no system is perfect, the regulatory and technology improvements have made newer underground storage tanks much safer than it has been in the past. While some of the safety concerns may be associated with some negative aspects of the project, there is a positive, twenty-four-hour neighborhood security. Around seventy-five percent of those trips are police or law enforcement. We are currently still in a design and permitting stage for this project. The design is approximately seventy-five percent complete, and we feel as though the general layout and site plan is in order. Ultimately, we hope to begin construction by the end of this year and be completed by the summer of next. I hope you found this presentation to be helpful and informative. But if you still have any questions or comments, please feel free to email me directly at the address on the screen. Okay, so that was the presentation. And so far, we've only received one email from, from the residents with questions. And, and, and their question, they only had two questions. The first was, are the large cypress trees going to remain in place? Are they going to be removed? And my answer to that one is that none of those trees are, are required to be removed as part of this project. But there is one all the way on, you know, the closest or I guess the furthest to the west that our landscape architect pointed out that is hollow in the center and it has a split. It comes up to a Y. And the day that he was telling me about that, it was one of our windier days and you could see as the branches were waving in the wind, that split was just opening and closing. So it's just a matter of time before it falls either on the sidewalk or on the site and, and becomes an issue. So that will, that is going to be recommended as being taken down as part of the project or sooner. And the second question was, is there any way that we could restrict some of the noisier vehicles that would be there refueling to be, you know, during daylight hours or not at night when people would be sleeping? And my response to that was, the only vehicles that I would really expect under normal circumstances to be refueling at night would be like police and law enforcement, and they're typically going to be much quieter. In an emergency situation, there is a possibility that we're going to be taking fuel tanks and using those to refuel generators. So there might be some larger diesel trucks here and there. But even still, it's, we're going to probably, I would imagine we would try to refuel as much as possible during daylight hours. And even still, I told them that our guys are, seem to be very respectful. And, you know, when the time comes, we would have that conversation with them that, you know, they need to be as quiet as possible at night when, when the residents are sleeping. So thus far, those are the only two questions I've received. So I'm, I'm here to answer any questions that you guys might have.
Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Costalano?
Um, just a quick question. It seems like maybe the biggest vehicle there regularly would be like the fuel refilling vehicle. About how often would it be refilled? And I'm imagining that would be during the day and not while people are sleeping.
Yeah, I don't know what their schedule is because we don't have a fuel facility just yet. But it's my understanding that they typically come every day or two just to keep it topped off. I mean, the, the point is, is if we have an emergency situation, we want to have as much fuel available as possible. So we don't want to run it down to where it's, you know, three-quarters of the way empty and have an
and have an event and not have much fuel. So we're going to keep it topped off, or pretty well topped off. But I would imagine that it would still only need to come maybe once every day or two, and yes, likely during daylight hours.
Um, one more question. I did email this question to Director Gerving, but I just wanted council to hear it. And that is, will it be possible to make arrangements for solar, a solar array on top of the canopy, either now or in the future? And potentially, I mean, that's a pass-through kind of situation, so you wouldn't want it exactly there. But is there perceived need for electric vehicle charging station? Maybe elsewhere on the site or anything like that?
I'm not sure what Brian's response is, but I will say that, that I guess the code changed, I believe it was last year, and all fuel canopies are required to be designed to accept solar panels, whether it be at the time of construction or in the future. So I can tell you that the canopy structure itself will be available to, or able to support solar panels in the future if we decide to add them.
That was, that was part of the response, so thank you, David. And the other part of it was that the city is also separately pursuing grant funding for large-scale battery backup systems at four critical facilities, this one included. And those battery backup systems will provide not only emergency backup power for about twenty-four hours, but also peak shaving, where basically the city will be able to procure electricity at cheaper off-peak hours and then offset our peak usage during on-peak hours from the battery system. And those battery systems will also facilitate in the future the installation of solar panels. They're kind of configured for that already. And because of that grant program, the battery backup systems, should we be successful with the application, will be covered at one hundred percent with no city match. It's a great opportunity.
Any further questions from council? Seeing none, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is anyone here from the public that'd like to comment on this item?
I have not had any requests from the public to speak on this item.
Thank you. So returning it to council, Councilmember Royo.
I have one quick question. Can the fire trucks be fueled there?
Yes, it is designed for a large, the largest fire truck that we have, which actually is a pretty good turning rate. But it's also designed for the, basically, the largest street legal truck that could be on our roads, which is a Cal Legal fifty.
Got it. Okay, I just, it's hard to tell scale from a rendering like that, so it looks kind of short. To be sure. All right. And with that, so you're seeking direction, but there's not a recommended motion. Is that correct for this item? Or is there a recommended motion?
There isn't a recommended motion. We're basically just asking for council's direction to proceed with the final process of design and bidding. And so if we have consensus from council, I don't think we need a motion. The next council action would likely be to award the bid after that project is let for bid.
Roger. All right. Well, I'm I'm generally supportive. I look forward to seeing what we get.
Okay. Thank you all.
Yeah, I would, thank you. I was just, I am in the same boat. I think it'd be good to move forward. We, we need this kind of backup, and so I appreciate staff doing the work to look into it and just the future. So we'll see what we, what you guys come back with, but thanks for doing it.
Anyone else? Do you have the direction you need, Director Gerving?
I believe so. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, moving forward to fiscal year twenty nineteen and twenty, strategic visioning updates.
That will be, good evening, council and Mayor Prota. I'm going to share my screen here. So as a part of the upcoming strategic visioning that we're trying to schedule with council, I'll get to that later on in the presentation, but staff wanted to provide an update on the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty strategic visioning that we did last year and kind of give an update on some of the actions that were put forward and what the status of those projects and programs are. So as a part of the strategic plan last year, we had three strategic plan actions, and those were optimizing city operations, enhancing economic vitality, and empowering and engaging a healthy community. There were certain components and projects and programs that were requested to be looked into and trying to accomplish during a certain timeframe. So I'm going to go through these three areas and talk about some of the areas that we've addressed and some of the areas, what their status is. So the first part, an optimizing city operations and a fiscal resiliency. Obviously, this year was a tough budget year, and one of the first things that we did as a part of of this year's budget was to review and really take a conservative look at revenues and expenditures and try and make sure that we're in as good a fiscal shape as possible by still maintaining the same amount of services as we possibly can. So with that in mind, all of the department heads, as well as Humble Bay Fire, got together and did a good job of reducing our budget overall about twelve percent throughout the entire general fund, while still maintaining the services that we currently have. So that was one of the parts of fiscal resiliency. The other one was obviously the renewal of our tax measure. Director Gerving has done a really good job of working on this and developed our ballot measure and sales active tax revenue, engaged with the research companies and education firms that we've developed the ballot measure and all the associated messaging. And staff will be working with council and other community groups to get out some of the education related to that tax measure, which should really start hitting the ground more so in September, when we start getting out to the different groups. Another component of optimizing city operations, as a part of the strategic visioning, was develop a facilities master plan. We did start this process, staff developed and released the request for qualifications. We selected a preferred consultant. And that project, however, was canceled and placed on hold, and we started finding out some of our budget issues. And so that's definitely something that can be revisited if council chooses to at our upcoming strategic visioning process. And the third component of optimizing city operation was to enhance our employee benefit program. Obviously, because of some of our financial situations, this makes it difficult. But IHR department did look in and Director Fulger looked into student loan payback program, started doing the research on that, and then once that started happening, due to the budget issues that's been put, and been postponed. We have done some that's somewhat of a benefit, but Public Works has developed the pandemic infectious disease that's continuity with our, with our operations plan to address pandemic diseases and kind of address some of the health and safety issues during a pandemic. The next component of this strategic visioning process last year was enhancing our economic vitality. The first component of that was supporting the arts and culture industry. We continued our utility box art program throughout town. We also had a big event last year in the parking lot of the Adorni for a community art wall down there and put that together with the community. And then obviously, this year, our project manager and economic development, Swan Outere, furthered the efforts of the Street Arts Festival and hosted the Street Arts Festival this past weekend in Henderson Center. The other component of this economic vitality and enhancing it is stimulating development through plans and regulation. I think our planning department has really done a good job of doing this over the past year. We finalized our housing element. We prepared the annual zoning code update. A portion of it approved today, it's used the updates related to that. And we released an RFP for development of city-owned parking lots for affordable housing. We've also drafted the local, the draft local coastal plan is complete and being reviewed and housed right now by staff. And after that, it'll be forwarded out to the Coast Commission for comment. And we've also pursued fiber connections, working with the California Center for Rural Policy to understand issues and needs surrounding broadband. And in the process, are in the process of scheduling a meeting with City Council, the Planning Commission, and the Economic Development to prepare a study session to discuss the topics that we discovered. And the third component of this area is adopt and implement a beautification plan. The city, mainly Public Works, has developed a partnership with HCOG and Caltrans through a strategic partnership grant, and they're working on an outline and a cohesive long-term multimodal corridor plan for Broadway. Kind of remove some of the blight and provide more different forms of transportation along Broadway. Another area that staff has worked on is the previous plan that was adopted for tree planting in the cultural arts district. Staff is working with Keep Beautiful to implement that plan. And the third area of the strategic plan, of the strategic visioning last year was empowering and engaging for a healthy community. One of those components was to update a homeless master plan. Prior to the pandemic, staff had researched and made comparisons with all of the many action plans throughout the state related to homelessness. And we gathered all the information from all the surveys, we've worked with the local homeless service groups to get their buy-in for review of the plan. We are in the process of drafting that plan just prior to COVID. And then as soon as COVID happened, obviously, a lot of our resources in our CATE program were going elsewhere in order to address the pandemic. And so that's been put on, but put on hold for now. But we will be continuing to work that. We have established a partnership with those other homeless action committees to help us review it and put together a good plan. We have done a lot of programming that will go into that plan while the pandemic is happening just prior to that. We have continued the job skills training program with Uplift and expanded that program. Just got recertified for it recently in order to do that during the pandemic. We've developed a new housing assistance program through grant funding with the Department of Health and Community Services. CSAT and EPD, as well as Uplift, they're working on the lead program, the law, excuse me, the law enforcement alternative diversion program, which is basically a way to provide opportunities for those people with minor infractions to work them off or reach certain milestones in the Uplift program rather than being put into the court system. EPD is working with the District Attorney's Office on getting that plan up and running, and they're ready to implement it as soon as they get approval. Another area that we're working on that's come up more recently, that would obviously be a part of the homeless action plan is the, what we're currently calling the SMARCS program, which would be the Strategic Mobile Alternative Response Team. That would once again be with CSAT and our Uplift team, looking at alternative ways to respond to nonviolent and initially more mental health calls from dispatch. So those will all be put into that plan, and staff will continue to work on that updated action plan for our homeless strategy. Second component of this area is enhancing and enrich a healthy community. We, Public Works has developed and updated a non-motorized map and plan for future expansion of a non-motorized facilities network within the city. We have released an RFQ for a diversity plan. We've hired a consultant, they're in the process of developing a diversity plan for the city and our community over the next year. Mayor Seaman, Seaman, excuse me, worked with a consultant on developing a children's and families initiative, which is forged from all of the city departments and other agencies, as well as Humble Bay Fire. Third component under this area was complete debate and do environmental document. Public Works Department has secured a coast conservancy funding for the environmental. And they selected a consultant to prepare the necessary studies and currently have an environmental document in progress and are applying for the active transportation program funding for, I believe, design and construction services for that portion of the loop trail that Public Works is working on. The fourth component in this area is increased environmental sustainability. One of the areas that we've been working on very hard prior to COVID was a zero-waste action plan, reaching out to a lot of stakeholders and the public and getting feedback. Just now what's happened prior to COVID hit, as soon as COVID hit, two of the main stakeholders, and we were trying to engage both schools and businesses, were really hit hard with the pandemic. So staff has steadily planned on bringing that back once we, you know, get into further stages of the pandemic. But we're hoping to be able to bring a draft plan back to council in December of twenty twenty. Another area we've worked on is Public Works has partnered with Tesla. Director Gerving brought this up previously to apply for CPUC funding for battery pack backup and peak shaving systems at a lot of our critical facilities. Working with the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board to allow some of our wastewater plants to go towards the Elk River Estuary and Title and Hampton Project as a part of our basin estuary program, which will not only help with the habitat there locally, but also benefits sea level rise and reduce flooding. Public Works is also working with RCEA to implement electric vehicle charging stations. Currently, that's on hold due to the budget. Right now, we're currently finalizing the Martin Stu enhancement project, which also somewhat helps with sea level rise, but also addresses flooding on the golf course and adjacent property in that the North Coast Land Trust owns. And it's also significantly enhances the fish habitat in that watershed. As it relates to sea level rise, we've developed an approach to sea level rise. We did mitigation and adaptation for the city's infrastructure and private properties. And we've selected a consultant to prepare an adaption analysis for those properties, city-owned and private properties. We've also finalized the city's annex to the county hazard mitigation plan, which allows access to grant funding to deal with some of these areas that are better flooding. And then finally, we've been working on a regional plan with the county and other local government agencies on the climate action plan. Just like many of these projects, it's on hold right now due to COVID and will be picked up as soon as, you know, more meetings can be held related to that. That's basically an update on the current, on the current strategic visioning that we have. I can take questions right now, but after that, I'd kind of like to go over the schedule and get council's feedback as to that schedule is going to work for them, but I could take any questions that anybody has on the aspects of last year's plan. Oh, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions?
Well, that makes it easy. Go back to my share screen. So what I have here are, is the proposed schedule from the consultants we've selected to work on this year's strategic visioning. I don't believe we've heard back from all the council members, but as you can see, there's, these are just the meetings that are scheduled for council to provide input. There's eight separate meetings. One, there's two on one day, and the rest of them are on individual days. There's the timeframes there and those type of things. Just staff is kind of looking for feedback as to whether or not this will work for some. If not, what some recommendations may be and what the thought processes for moving forward with this schedule that we have in front of us. They don't want to look at it too.
Do you have to see them? Yes. Does anybody have any comments about this? Concerns, questions? No? So I actually have a question and a concern. So for me, working, these times are really inconvenient. They're during my work time, and I work, I need to be at work. And I'm just curious about what everybody's thoughts are. Um, and I'm just curious about what everybody's thoughts are. I know that, um, we're into, you know, mid-August, almost the end of August. We've got new council coming in in November. Um, this will cost us money as far as I'm aware with the consultant and all of those things. And I'm wondering if this isn't something that we just want to forego. It sounds like we've gotten a lot done and move forward in February with, um, with new council on board or, or January or March um, to, uh, schedule our new, uh, strategic visioning. I don't, I guess I'm not understanding or I'm not clear on what, what the importance of it would be when we've got a whole new council coming in next month and we've only got three more months until that happens. So does anybody have any comments on that or thoughts? Natalie, Councilmember Arroyo?
Thank you, Councilmember Pergel. Um, I, um, I definitely was envisioning, um, a more initially, I was envisioning a more curtailed version of this, um, as sort of a, um, an interim phase to help us be sure we're on the same page. Um, we've had a lot of transitions in, um, city managers and our council, I think, hasn't, you know, hasn't been able to meet face to face, so I was thinking it would have value in that way. But, um, based on the proposal we got, which I think is a much more in-depth and thoughtful approach, um, I do think it makes sense to wait until perhaps December, January. Um, I, I think it would be good to prioritize doing early in the new year, um, and not wait till like February or March. But that said, you know, I wonder, um, if staff are looking for and wanting the opportunity to meet with one another and with council in a less, um, like, agendized manner. I can obviously still have an agenda, but, um, you know, are, are you seeing a need for that in the near future, or do you think it could wait?
Well, I, I could speak on behalf of staff. Um, I, I would say that, um, you know, there are a lot of things that are still pending from the last strategic visioning because of the, whether it's the budget situation or whether it's because of the pandemic. So I think if, if it's council's desire, we could continue to work on those things and then reach out to, um, the consultants and try and maybe get a more, um, agreeable schedule. Obviously, we're going to have new people on the council, so we won't really know what's agreeable or not, but we can definitely reach out to them and, and look for an early January, mid-January type of schedule for, for the same process, but, uh, that to council.
You know, a great week that that would be Martin Luther King's birthday week for president. There's just cool. Councilmember Mezner.
Thank you, Pergel. Um, so I, um, I think that it does make sense to allow staff to continue to work on the things that they're working on. There's a lot that's happened this year. Um, I, really, the reason for the strategic visioning is to be able to meet face to face and be able to have that, um, that really cohesive plan, um, that we can just hash things out and, and what we want to do and have a, um, have a focused division for, um, staff and council. And I think right now, it seems that the staff already has that, um, with the council. Um, and, uh, and I agree, there's only a few months left. While I will miss it because it's really fun to get, to spend the time together and interact in, um, with our staff. And I appreciate our staff so much. Um, it's, it's, it does seem really almost futile at this point. So I agree, I do think it would be better to do it with the changes that are coming up in the new year. It's just kind of an unfortunate year, the way things have laid out, um, and, and all the changes that we've had with COVID as well. So it makes sense, um, to not spend the money right now as well. I think that's a big piece of it.
Any further comments? Councilmember Castellano.
Um, yeah, I, I don't mind waiting. I agree that, um, maybe latter January. I do feel like, you know, I respect people wanting to have holidays. So, you know, maybe being willing to work around holidays and things. Um, yeah, you, you know, I think my biggest interest at this time was, you know, because there have been a lot of transitions, um, both within the city and within the community. You know, if it seemed useful to kind of, uh, have, again, like a less formal way of, of kind of talking about the issues, talking about what we perceive in the community. Um, I'm still curious if like a one-day thing, just to kind of, I don't know, like, al- almost just a, um, ma- maybe it's already happening and, you know, through the meetings, but, um, a way of, I think, just talking about perceptions of Eureka and, you know, as we're kind of continuing to move through the pandemic and things like that, um, if that would be useful or not. But also I'm fine with just completely waiting.
If it's council's desire, we could schedule a special study session and try and design a framework around those things. Either it's discuss what is pending during the strategic visioning or discuss the issues that council, council member Castellano is talking in, if that's something that, um, council requests. We could set up a special study session that's a couple hours or something like that to do something similar.
Appreciate that. Um, sometimes it feels like, yeah, we just don't really have that space, um, given the way our agendas are built and it makes sense. But, um, it'd be nice to have the opportunity to raise a few of our, um, things we're noticing or our priorities that are, are not necessarily in the day-to-day of our regular meetings. But, um, so I'd, I'd be interested in that, um, and I just did want to go back to the idea of deferring this. I, I do hope that, um, I, I've been really enjoying, um, talking with these, um, facilitators who are local about the planning process, and, um, they've been really thoughtful. So while they've given us a lot of dates, I think part of it has been built around our availability and also the need to distance somewhat. So I think if we can, um, you know, still consider working with them, but move it to early twenty twenty-one, um, that would be, that would be good, and perhaps we can get a more, a schedule that's just a little bit more doable for people. Um, and I'm open to that week, um, but I recognize also that holidays are important.
I was just throwing that out there. It could be really, I could make it work anytime. I just, you know.
I could make that week work, especially, um, you know, if we're, yeah, anyways.
David Holliday, so I'll be, I'll be.
Councilmember, if Mayor Protember Gao gets an entire week off, so she has a little more room to play with.
Um, Mayor and Council, I do want to relay, uh, the consultants. I've been discussing these dates with, uh, Mr. James quite a bit, and he does need time in between these meetings to do some material preparation and then, um, kind of organize the comments that are made. So I think he would want it over a longer period than a week. It would probably be, probably the month of January from the beginning to the end.
So I could make that work. It would just be much easier if it was after three thirty or in the evening.
Okay.
How everybody else feels about that, but during the middle of the day is problematic.
I would also be open to a weekend, um, if there's like an, if there's an intensive component. Like, I understand some of this is like pre-meeting with people and some of it will be pandemic-dependent. But, um, if we could consider, uh, you know, maybe part of a, part of a Friday and then all of a Saturday or some schedule like that, um, I realize the consultants may have other ideas as well, but that, that's the kind of schedule that I imagine might work for, uh, more of us.
I'll relay that to Roger and Mary.
Do you know what you need?
Is there still interest in a study session, um, prior to January?
So anybody?
I guess I have a question about that. Just, do you feel, um, Director Slattery, that that is something that the staff would really appreciate?
If, if, I see, if there are concerns, definitely. If there are concerns about, you know, what direction it's going for, in a certain area, I definitely think that staff would want to hear about those concerns. Um, also, you know, there's things that, um, you know, were involved in this current strategic plan that don't feel that the attention, you know, give, given to those areas. And yes, I think staff would like to hear that.
So shall we then have direct, have city manager Slattery create a special meeting to discuss uh, kind of an informal, or will it be a formal situation for, um, kind of a strategic planning? It seems that it would be great to have a report and then be able to comment on that and give our concerns. Is that what you're thinking, or did you have something else in mind?
Um, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm open to that for sure. Um, I'll have to think about what concerns I may have, you know. I mean, I also deeply value like a philosophical space for like talking about our perceptions of our community. And, um, and, you know, and, and what leadership, um, wise leadership is during this time. You, you know, as, as a council, like with staff, um, you, you know, I, I, I generally think that, um, I, I appreciate the report tonight and the direction we're going on things. But I also feel like often in our kind of agendized meetings, um, we're very much in response to specific items. Um, and there, it is rare to have the time to, to kind of talk about the whole um, in a way that I think is valuable, or in how the parts relate to the whole.
Yeah, oh, may I go? Um, I guess since I also expressed interest in having that, I mean, I, I do think a facilitated conversation that includes, um, an element of team building, but not like just for the sake of team building. But team building involves like, um, staff and council working together on some visioning and steps to, to get to that vision. Um, you know, in the, in the shorter term context, I do think that has a lot of value that perhaps a special session wouldn't have because we wouldn't get that face time with, um, with staff and, and that element of like working together outside of our, of our norm, where we're sitting on the dais and you all are reporting to us. So I think there's something, um, in the format that's lost, um, and so I don't know that. Sure, I would always welcome the opportunity to talk with staff about our vision for the community. Um, but I think I'm a nerd like that, and so I, I don't know if it's useful, a useful way to spend our time. Um, so if you don't see like we need this right now, if you're like, we have our marching orders, we are good, we have more than enough on our plates, then I would say let's wait and defer it till a time when it can be useful. Um, but if you feel otherwise, then, then I'm certainly willing to spend that time.
I definitely think that staff has their marching orders and definitely have their, their workload to work on. A concern that I would have is that this being a, a many strategic visioning session that doesn't give it, and allow the time that a strategic visioning session should have. Um, I wouldn't want to do it just, just to do it. But as far as what staff has to do, they definitely have their marching orders and I think are in a good position to continue with them.
I'm fine with it if that seems, oops, sorry.
You're fine.
Okay.
Our direction now, we're clear in our direction now. Great. Okay, so moving on, city manager reports.
So tonight, we have Chief Robertson, who's been begging to give us a report for a very long time, and I'm really looking forward to it.
Thank you, City Manager Slattery. Uh, good evening, Mayor Protemon Council. Uh, as Manager Slattery said, um, it's a good time to give an update. Uh, and I will be sharing my screen and talking, talking through it. So this, uh, brief update, uh, I'll talk about calls for service up until this year and the COVID effect. Um, as well as some more details on the effects on our stock. Uh, some, uh, staffing history and impacts due to budget. Uh, some facility and up, apparatus upgrades that have been two years in the making that we're seeing come to fruition. Some recent grants we've received and just, uh, some alterations to our community service that we've had to do uh, because of the sheltering place order. She has a, uh, short graph, uh, just indicating for each fire station, uh, that Humboldt Bay has. As a reminder, we have five, three, uh, in the city, two in the fire district, um, which are in the surrounding county areas. You will see that, uh, we did see a generally a decrease in calls from the first to the second quarter. Um, although the anomaly is Station Three, uh, which as a reminder is on Henderson and Ocean avenues, I did see an increase for the third quarter, uh, which, uh, hasn't quite ended yet. We did some projections, since we're not quite there yet, just to show a comparison of kind of where we are in relation to the first two quarters. Here's a total, uh, comparison for the entire organization. Uh, to date, we've, uh, and this was off yesterday, uh, responded to over four thousand calls. Uh, so it's safe to say, um, we're going to be, uh, increased call volume relative to twenty nineteen. Um, and you can see the decrease in calls from the first to the second quarter. And we really saw that decrease, uh, in, uh, early April when the sheltering place order was first, uh, in, implemented, um, and then things have, are more or less bounced back since then up into the third quarter. Where we're projected to be higher than we were in that first quarter. This is a pie chart breakdown of our, uh, calls for service. We generally, um, average the same ratios through the last five years. Uh, the majority of our calls are rescue and medical, um, followed by good-intent calls, service calls, uh, fires and, excuse me, false alarms and fires. And I'll talk a bit more about all those categories again. Essentially, these categories are stipulated by the government, uh, through the National Fire Incident Reporting System, or INFRS. Every year, we're required to submit our incident responses to that national database, and it's used, uh, for various things, including grant funding. So it's a very important thing. And it also allows the National Fire Academy to determine fire, uh, safety trends that we can attempt to reduce and mitigate. Fires are structure fires, vegetation fires, trash fires, and things like that. Rescue and EMS, uh, include extracations, water rescues, and all medical-related calls. Hazardous conditions are things like fuel leaks or electrical issues. Uh, service calls, uh, which again, we go on quite a, a few of, uh, include public service assistance, agency assists with, uh, other public safety agencies, including EPD and the Sheriff's Office. Bone complaints and cover assignments. Uh, good-intent calls is when we respond. A good intent calls is when we respond and then things aren't quite what the responsible party indicated they were. So we're either canceled en route or unseen. It's the wrong location or there's no emergency at that location. It's steam that's mistaken as fire or it's controlled burning. And then the last category is special calls such as collapsed buildings and things that are outside the other categories. Here's a breakdown of the numbers specifically for all of those categories. Again, sixty, sixty to sixty-five percent is where we generally average for medical calls. And four percent for fire calls is a relatively high average across the state. So moving into the effect of COVID, specifically in the first into the second quarter of the year, March and April, and then just some other details. Up to date, we've tracked about seventy-one specific COVID nineteen related calls. We do that through our data database for records management. Even though we're following all the CDC guidelines, as with much else with COVID, it's so unprecedented that certain elements did not protect our personnel like was was supposed to. We had an incident where a patient was seen three times over a week. He didn't have any symptoms of COVID and he was not tested for it. After a week, he was finally admitted to the hospital, became symptomatic, tested positive. And so what that did through the contact tracing team was we had an initial exposure of seven personnel and three of those were quarantined for two weeks. Subsequent to that, we increased our PPE for all calls, assuming that any medical call may be COVID related. And since then, we have been fortunate to have no positive tests through the organization, including families. So we're very happy about that. Much like everyone else, we incurred significant costs due to the pandemic. These were submitted for reimbursement through FEMA, through the disaster declaration. And we're waiting to hear news on that. We were able to secure thousands of PPE items such as masks, gowns, and gloves through the County EOC donations from the public. And by being a bit more inventive with our purchasing, we were able to secure a pretty good cash, assuming that we would have a surge and that would loss us the rest of the year. And we've been able to maintain that. We initially had two, three positions in the County EOC in the management role, specifically operations. Then into the Public Safety Branch and the Public Information Officer that started in March and went through about two months. And we still have our PIO in the Joint Information Center one day a week assisting the county there. All of our personnel were offered viral and antibody testing in June. We had about twenty-five people take both tests and all were negative. And we're going to continue with our expanded PP and response protocols through the rest of the year. The county recently stopped with a list of of potential COVID cases that just assisted us and EPD through dispatch, knowing kind of what to prepare for. With the loss of that, we just assume now that everything again could be COVID related and we prepare for that. So moving into staffing, this is a simple bar chart to just show with the orange lines where total personnel have been over the last ten years. The green is chiefs, the darker green is admin, and the blue is firefighters. And what we've done over the years through attrition and reallocation is decrease the admin number and increase our firefighters. And that was definitely a benefit of our consolidation. But you'll see that we have relatively the same number of personnel as we did ten years ago. We went to an Ohio model last year to reduce overtime as well as the burden of forced shifts for our firefighters, just being much more aware of the toll it takes on them and their families. That was proving to be very successful, but with the budget situation and the hiring freeze we've also instituted, we're anticipating three vacancies in the next couple of months. One from a potential worker's retirement, one from a service retirement, and one from a person resigning to take another position elsewhere. So that will drop our numbers back to our minimum staffing for a total of fifty-six people. We're hopeful that the budget revenue projections will be better than expected. And with a successful tax measure, we'll be able to consolidate for the future next year. I just wanted to talk about our new fire engines. They're currently in Sacramento. They were finished a couple of weeks ago, made the cross-country trip. They're down there for a post-trip inspection. They will hopefully be up here in Eureka in the next week or so. And we'll then begin outfitting them with the goal to have them ready on frontline on October first. As a reminder, we have a apparatus replacement plan that I was fortunate to be able to develop with Director Gerbing and Malar. That is a ten to thirty year plan. And this includes the city and the district. And these two engines will be replacing one city and one district engines. Both of those are nineteen ninety-one models. The two new engines were purchased last year by parent agency, the city financed that purchase over a seven-year period using the JPA Capital Improvement Fund. And the fire district paid for this in full using the same JP fund as well as the apparatus replacement fund that they have. And here are some beautiful pictures of the very bright red engines. So moving on to facilities, as you may be aware, we have a training site down at foot of Helfica, next to the wastewater treatment plant. We have been attempting to get it paved for ever since it was built up in two thousand and seven, and we were finally able to secure successful funding through Measure Z last year through the Humboldt County Fire Chiefs Association. And we're also going to, that's also going to find a new fence around the the perimeter of the property as well as potential painting of the tower. And just a quick history lesson, we originally had a concrete tower as Eureka Fire on the same lot where Costco now is. When Costco was built, that tower was obviously destroyed. So there were several years where we'd had no dedicated training facility. The city was able to procure this site and build the storage container tower we have in two thousand and seven. And it's been in a real great resource, not only for us, but for the entire county. So we're excited about these improvements. And they'll definitely improve our training abilities. The other upgrades are to our two city fire stations. We haven't been able to paint them since two thousand and three. And we were able to do that working with Director Slattery at the time. And again, paid through, paid for through the JPA Capital Improvement Fund. They look really good. I was able to secure some contrast on the apparatus doors. So I think that's a really great, modern looking station. And the staff is very happy with the upgrade for sure. It really looks good. So that was Station Three and this is Station Four over on Middle Avenue. The two recent grants we received, one was for nineteen thousand dollars to the CARES Act that was a reimbursement for the PPE we purchased. The second one was something we received, received confirmation of earlier last week. We got a hundred and eighty-nine thousand substance abuse and mental health services administration rural EMS grant, which is through the Federal Department of Health and Human Services. And it's for the enhancement of paramedicine and rural EMS. I'll quickly read the purpose of the program is to recruit and train EMS personnel in rural areas. We'll specifically use this fund for platoon training of all our EMTs and paramedics as well as recertification costs. Some new training equipment and a new electrocardiogram for response on one of our apparatus. We will send five of our EMTs through the CR Paramedic Program. And we will also get a community feasibility program to look at a community paramedicine enhancement. And I just wanted to make special mention and thanks to Mayor Seaman, who sent me the announcement of this grant back in February, and we were able to obviously successfully get it, which is really amazing. Much like the city, we've been doing some diversity and equity work using stepping stones, diversity consulting, which is a local group. They're also working with Fog Break. And so we'll be working together with them and Fog Break at the city to benefit from the diversity work over the next year. Currently, we did an initial survey as well as assessment of policies and procedures. And we will be getting a report later this week that I will share with the JPA board. And lastly, just some elements of our changed community outreach. Community outreach is a big goal of ours and a big part of the work that we do. We've continued our virtual second grade education program, the highlights of which are Kelly the Far Dog and her coworker, Fafari Yala Montalban, have been doing FaceTime classes with lots of second grade classes and kindergarteners who call in and and get to see Kelly do some cool tricks. We've shared a lot of informational videos on our social media platforms. We're doing CCI checks and CPR hybrid classes by request. The CPR certifying agencies did extend the deadline for anybody who has CPR cards that are expiring by six months, but we were able to to remote class certification and then just a skills check in person. And lastly, we started a YouTube video series that includes station tours. And this will be a highlight of doing a fire prevention week in October where we are anticipating not being able to do our regular open house. So we're going to be doing a lot of other fun things to engage with the public. So we're just really looking forward to benefiting from this different opportunity. That is the conclusion of my report. I would like to just show you a quick fifty-second video that's in our YouTube. And then I will take any questions.
My name's Tony Freeman. I'm a fire captain with Home Bay Fire. In light of the coronavirus, a lot of us have been locked down and sheltered in place. And we have not had our normal classroom to be able to come visit us at the stations and be able to see all the different kids that we normally have from during the school year. We got some requests for a tour and we thought, hey, why don't we do a station tour virtually? So welcome to your mutual tour of Home Bay Fire. This is our headquarters station. And normally, this is where your tour would begin, is that we would introduce you to our staff and be able to show you our lovely belt that our secretaries love.
We can't see it. I don't, or I can't see it.
And for this tour, we're going to take you out and focus on our show.
I also can't see it, but I'm liking the sound. I can hear it.
Yeah, we can hear it but can't see it.
I think if you stop your screen share and then start it again, we should be able to see it.
Yes, would you like me to take the time to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fifty seconds of big smiley Captain Freeman, so.
That sounds great.
All right, I'll give it a go.
Much better.
And show you all the things that we have. My name's Tony Freeman. I'm a fire captain with Home Bay Fire. In light of the coronavirus, a lot of us have been locked down and sheltered in place. And we have not had our normal classroom to be able to come visit us at the stations and be able to see all the different kids that we normally have from during the school year. We got some requests for a tour and we thought, hey, why don't we do a station tour virtually? So welcome to your mutual tour of Home Bay Fire. This is our headquarters station. And normally, this is where your tour would begin, is that we would introduce you to our staff and be able to show you our lovely belt that our secretaries love when all the kids get to see it. This is our weekend show app. That's Ashley over there inside. Say hello. And for this tour, we're going to take you out and focus on our show and show you our killer and show you all the things that we have here at Station One, Home Bay Fire.
So that's just an example. There's a nine-minute video after that where Captain Freeman gives a tour of the truck. I don't know what that is. Sorry about that. So as I was saying, there's a nine-minute video thereafter of tour of the truck. And we'll be working on a lot of other things that should be a lot of fun. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Could you say a little bit more about what you'll be studying or looking into with the grant funding, the SAMSEC grant funding as far as the paramedicine?
Yes, so there's a community, community paramedicine programs. There are many variations thereof. They're similar to the SMART program that Manager Slattery talked about, but more from the EMS angle. We initially looked at this back in two thousand and fifteen. It is limited by state scope for paramedics. There were twelve initial pilot programs. Those were set to end in two thousand and seventeen. They've been extended. So we would like to do a study to see what opportunities they are, not just in terms of the state scope, but also locally. Because obviously, there's many needs that are not being met, and we would like to help improve those. So that's just one element of that. And there, like I said, many variations of what that particular thing could look like. It could be mental health focused. It could be post hospital treatment focused. It could be pre-hospital treatment focused. It could be welfare checked based on working with the HHS. So that's part of the study would be to identify what would be the best avenue or model to follow locally.
Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. And I am, it is interesting to see the effects that COVID had. But I'm really excited about the grant, very excited about that. That's going to be good. And I know it's been something that has been, you know, we've been kind of been talking about over the years. So I appreciate that and your report. But I don't know if there's if there's any like really clear differences that you've seen in with COVID in your amount of calls and stuff? And how that's affected your team? If that was clear, I don't know. Somehow, I don't know if I really saw that, but I wondered if that was something that was a big change or if it was more just the effects of COVID on your team when you weren't aware, like the story that you gave. So did you see just a big change in those numbers because of COVID or during those months?
So I would say there's two effects. So I'll talk about those. One is to So I would say there's two effects. So I'll talk about those. One is to our staff and one is to the citizens we serve. So in terms of the citizens, we saw an initial drop. And that really was, if you look down into the numbers, was dependent on the particular station and the area they serve. We generally saw a significant decrease in medical calls. My anecdotal speculation is that people self-triaaged how important they thought their situation was. And also I think many people were very hesitant to get in an ambulance and go to the hospital. So that would account for a part of that decrease. We did see an increase in calls to some of the care homes to assist city ambulance and other ambulance providers. So that was a bit of an anomaly, so an increase. And then a lot of our other non-emergency calls, those good intent and service calls I talked about, those decreased initially. And again, I think people were just trying to minimize exposure. We still had plenty of fires of various kinds. We have some really significant structural fires over that period. And that was quite interesting, interacting with people in that, in the shelter in place. But after about five weeks or so, we saw the numbers start to come back to where they were before. And they're definitely like I indicated, back to, to almost, I would say, a normal level, if you want to call it that. In terms of the effect on our personnel, we had that initial scare. We did a, a couple of sessions talking to our medical director. Dr. Gertis is a, you're a doctor at Sancho to help kind of assuage the greater concerns our staff had. Because, you know, even with all the guidelines and indications from the state is a completely unprecedented situation. And really I didn't respond to those calls. And when I put myself in that position, I know that would be really uncomfortable, assuming that any encounter you had could, could have this effect. And the other scary thing is we've seen is that it affects, it could affect families. There's been quite a few firefighters that have died from COVID in the state and across the country. There was a, a lot of fear of the potential economic effects. There have been over 3,500 firefighters laid off across the country. Just a, you know, a lot of additional stress on top of everything else. Firefighters have been very resilient. They've been very innovative. They've been diligent in taking care of each other and themselves. And I'm, like I said, very, very happy that we haven't had any positives.
Thank you. I really appreciate you giving us that perspective too of even some of that stress on the firefighters and their families. Just appreciate what you guys do and appreciate the work that you do in our community. And thank you for, for just your daily focus on taking care of our community at the, at that level. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Chief Robertson. That was a most excellent report and a lot of great information. And I too appreciate everything that you guys do all the time, all day, every day. You certainly are a great asset to our community and you're appreciated. So, thank you.
Thanks. Now I would just like to say that the successes that I believe I spoke to, including the health of our firefighters, as well as, you know, we talked about the stress on them, but also EPD is dealing with similar situations and encouraging people every day. And I think the way we've collaborated as an organization in the city, whether it's dealing with COVID, getting reimbursements or grants, or painting the fire station's amazing colors. All of those are a result of working together. So I'm very happy about that and a very, very happy about the great team and work that we're doing.
Next time we'll paint it brand colors. Thanks again, Chief.
You.
Thank you.
Okay. No? All right. Thank you. So moving on to council reports. Let's start with Councilmember Mezner.
Okay. Well, I guess I just wanted to say that the Harbor Committee, the Harbor Committee and the work with the League of California Cities interfacing with Coastal Commission. Just that's some of the work that we've been doing pretty consistently. And I was glad to just see those, those things moving forward. And even tomorrow, we have a presentation to all 66 city coastal cities in California. So that's fun to be a part of and be able to see movement forward. And I really wanted to say thank you, a big thank you to directors or city manager Slattery, as well as his team and the work in that they've consistently done. But also I know that that's been true of public works. And there's a number of departments that have worked really hard to see things moving forward where many cities are blocked. And so I appreciate the team and all their work. So thank you to all of you. I also just wanted to say that I took, took a little bit of a vacation during this last couple of weeks and we, I was able to get out and do a lot of paddle boarding, especially in this great weather, and just wanted to encourage people to, to really take advantage of our beautiful area and enjoy it because it's such an important thing for our mental health and, and just keeping healthy in general as well, physically healthy. So just wanted to remind people of that, the importance of all of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
Okay. Um, let's see. I, along with Councilmember Arroyo, attended the, and many of the heads of departments attended the Equity Diversity and Inclusion kind of initial meeting. And what I really took away was that people kind of across the board with Eureka are really committed to this process and, you know, have been thinking deeply about it. So I'm appreciating that. And, you know, you just, of course, want to continue encouraging the public to reach out to us about those matters. Let's see, I'm continuing to attend the Economic Resilience Consortium meetings. And I've also been working with the Ink People and regional arts leadership across Trinity and Delnor County's along with Humboldt Area Foundation to create a public arts fund project, or, or sorry, a fund for public arts projects that should be announced within the next few days. And so this will be funds for artists to create projects in their communities. So keep an eye out for that. It's going to be really exciting. And then I have been reached out to by a local advocate for public banking about AB Assembly Bill 310 about inquiring as to whether the city of Eureka would be interested in writing a letter of support for this bill. It would expand the I Bank's capacity to provide direct lending to local governments. It would also kind of improve potential financing for the, for the California bank and could potentially help with small business recovery. So I'm just curious if other council members would be interested in seeing this on an upcoming agenda meeting or agendas for an upcoming meeting.
I'd be interested in seeing the bill. You know, and like going through that, just to see what that entails and if there's some kind of presentation or something.
I'd be interested in a presentation as well.
Okay. Is that something that we could reach out to the community member for, for that presentation?
You could have that, a particular person maybe come during mayor reports and give their kind of an update on what's going on and talk about the bill. So maybe worth talking to the mayor about if you've got consent.
Great. I'll follow up with City Manager Slattery about that. And and, and yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Arroyo.
Great. Well, I was so excited to go to the Eureka Street Art Festival, the third year of the Street Art Festival took place this last week. And the murals are amazing and they add so much to Henderson Center. So I'm so glad that Henderson Center was the focus this year and I got to be in my ward and that was fun. I really can't take any credit besides like going and being supportive and being totally behind it. But um, Swan did an amazing job helping to coordinate it along with Michelle and Jenna, who have helped co-coordinate it in the last couple of years. They are, I think, interested in recruiting folks who'd like to be more involved in that festival in the future. I think it's a heavy lift for, for the three of them. And so just something, if, if you're interested in, in pitching in, I know I will be in the future looking for ways to volunteer to help make that even more of a success or just continue the amazing success they've already had. So it's really beautiful. I love that the poet's laureate were able to be involved and that there's been just such a synergy between a lot of the programs that we have in the city as well as in the arts community. So and the Henderson Center Merchants Association, we're really thrilled. So all good. I also, as Leslie mentioned, I attended the diversity kickoff and it was really great to spend a relatively short amount of time and get really into, right into some of the ideas that folks had around the vision for what Eureka will be like and feel like in the future. And kind of where we're at now and, and you know, some of the different perspectives on, on where we are and where we need to go. But for the most part, I would say there was a pretty cohesive vision and it was nice to hear it articulated and to have that time and space to talk about it. So thank you to the staff who are helping make that happen and really actively participating. I had a good conversation. And want to thank Captain Stevens and Director Gerving in particular for participating in a conversation with several residents in the area south of Paris, along F Street and Fairway Drive, who have concerns about traffic safety. If you've driven that way lately, you may have seen some of their homemade signs, they're sort of mounting a campaign to really get some attention from both the county and the city around the issues of traffic safety along that corridor. So we had a good initial conversation and took a couple of hours to really go through like what the concerns were and what the county's approach has been. And a lot of the concerns they have surround the F and Oak Street intersection, which is outside of city jurisdiction, but certainly a city areas are also problem for speeding. And so it was productive conversation. I look forward to touching base with Supervisor Bone about the county's component of that and seeing where we can go from there. And then I just continue to be on Coast Guard orders. So if folks are trying to reach me during the morning, that is a time when I'm pretty much out of reception and at the base and McKinleyville, for some reason, the reception there is really bad. So thanks to your staff and community members for being patient. And I'll be going back to teaching at Humboldt State University on Monday. Just one class there, but I always really enjoy meeting students. I have a class of 35 students every semester and it's great to meet so many students at HSU and just kind of take stock of their thoughts about the community too. So it keeps me in touch with like a different component of our community that I might not otherwise meet. And I think that's it for now.
And I believe Councilmember Allison, you are no longer with us. Is that correct? So he let me know earlier that he had to leave early on it, on something. So I just wanted to talk about a few brief things. First thing is the Chamber of Commerce is doing a wear your mask campaign. It's in collaboration with some other entities. And I would just really encourage people, like, you know, when you're out in public, like I don't have my mask on right now, but wear your mask. This is serious business. We're not, you know, if you believe it, if you don't believe it, doesn't matter. Wear your mask in the market. Wear your mask when you're out with people you don't know and be cognizant of that. We're in some pretty, you know, interesting times moving forward. And so this is going to be critical in, in our healing, in our region. Secondly, I just wanted to say please shop local when you can. We've got our businesses that are trying very hard to come back, come out of this really tough time and anything you can buy local, please do. And then if you haven't seen, the Skywalk is coming along beautifully at the zoo. If you get an opportunity, you know, Councilmember Mezner was saying, you know, get outside. There's a great trail back in there that's beautiful. You can walk back, you can see what kind of what's happening. And then lastly, I just too wanted to say thank you so much to Swan, Michelle and Jenna for putting on the Arts Festival. I went every day except for one. And I just love that it was such a great event. They created a lot of happiness and a lot of joy in our community in a time when really there's not a lot going on. So, so thank you to them. Thank you, everybody for being here. And with that, we are adjourned.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night.